Welcome to the second budget session of Williamsport City Council. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Don Novio, followed by my pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. We're here again tonight to address the city budget and provide the best possible service for the taxpayers' dollar. In doing so, we work with an eye to detail and to the ultimate final outcomes. We understand the work ahead of us and take the responsibility very seriously. Within that, we pledge to do our best efforts possible and seek the best possible end to this budget session. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our second budget session where we have the review of Department of Public Safety, Recreation, and General Government. We will start on page 29 with the Office of the Director of Public Safety. Chief, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President. Council members, fine. How are you?
Good.
In front of you is the Office of the Director, 2018 Budget Personnel Services Office Manager, eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Purchases of services, office rentals, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Community outreach, one thousand dollars. For a total of two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Henderson.
The community outreach, just wondering what the plans are there out of curiosity.
Some of that money will be used for our police open house to defer the costs that we give out as far as trinkets, bracelets, candy, so on and so forth, as well as the Major League Baseball parade, some candy, and some things we hand out during that event. So we didn't have a line item for that last year. We decided this year would be a good place to put it to give us a budgetary number to stay within.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this page? There you go. Thank you. Next is the Police Department, page thirty-four and thirty-five.
Bureau of Police Personnel Services, 2018, eight million eight hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-one. Purchase of services, investigative expense, five thousand. Training, fifty thousand. Police academy, nothing. Travel, two thousand. Subscriptions and dues, five thousand. Nothing under K-9. Medical, thirty-five hundred. Contract services, fifty thousand. Utilities, nine thousand.
Go ahead and finish.
Supplies and materials, general office supplies, seventeen thousand. Gas and oil, fifty-eight thousand. Fingerprint and photo, sixteen thousand. Uniforms, thirty-three thousand one fifty. Uniforms initial issue, twenty thousand. Firearms, fifty-six thousand five hundred. Support equipment, ten thousand. Communications, twenty-six thousand. Equipment repairs, vehicle repairs, forty thousand. Radio repairs, nine thousand. Radio maintenance contract, one thousand five hundred. Computer repairs, twenty thousand. Equipment, vehicle lease purchase, ninety-three thousand. For a total of nine million three hundred and forty-two thousand and eleven dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? A couple that I have, really, a comment, a couple comments first and then a question. Under training, I noticed that we, last year it budgeted thirty-four thousand, which was an increase, I think, from the year before. In fact, I just happened to bring my 2014 budget, and at that time, we were at twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. And so we've seen growth, and I think we've all emphasized training, given our young force in particular. And so I have no problem with continuing to find money to increase the training budget. But could you talk about what going from twenty-three thousand to thirty-four thousand, actually spending forty-four thousand this year, and then the plan for next year in fifty thousand means for the force?
Yes. Currently, twenty-five members of the department have less than five years on the job. We initiated a new career development policy within a department, which requires us to train certain new officers, specifically brand-new hires, within three years, a core of five classes. That is on the administration to make sure they receive those five training classes. The same way goes throughout the ranks for corporal, sergeant, lieutenant. There are certain core classes that we believe are essential, not only for the department, but for their career development in order to move up within a department and learn the different aspects of the department. So we did that in order to have some type of structure and training calendar that we can go by every year and say, okay, we have these are in, we can host these, that'll be less cost to us. But we now have a plan in place for training, other than just picking a training out and say, do you want to go to it? We have core training values now.
And that, I mean, I think, as we both have said, that that's important, especially because it's a young force. But what is your sense of, you know, the measurable impact of having that kind of systematic plan in place? How will the public be able to tell that the training has had the intended effect?
Well, I think, based on the training itself and the experience the officers will gain, especially in their younger careers.
Right.
Will help them out in developing not only their interviewing skills, their testimony, their tactics when it comes to felony vehicle stops, interdiction, so on and so forth. So it can only enhance their knowledge in that from a job performance aspect. And now that we have employee performance reviews and job descriptions, we can incorporate those together into the career development to ensure a well-rounded officer within a department.
So something like the fifty thousand dollars that we're spending this year will have a positive impact on the effectiveness of the force over the next twenty years, then?
Most definitely, yes, sir.
That's great. I think it's a really good investment to have. I think I know the answer to this, but could you talk about the increase in both the firearms, compared to last year's budget, and the decrease in the vehicle lease purchase?
Yes, sir. The increase in the firearms budget is a direct result of the need for tasers. And when I say need for tasers, ours are outdated, we have a lot of breakdowns, they're not, some are not reliable. So we need to purchase forty-five, I think it is correct, Captain? Forty-five new tasers. It's not for every officer. We'll have a couple for the agents to use should they need them. We'll have a couple spares should one of the officers break down, one of the officers break down. So instead of purchasing three vehicles this year, we decided we could get away with two, take the money out of the vehicle line item purchase, move it up into firearms, and create that purchase for the tasers without increasing anything outside of what we did last year.
Sounds good. So you would imagine that the firearm line item would return somewhere close to the previous year for next year?
Yes, depending on the contractual, how we work the contract out with taser. Just as an FYI, the LEA, the Law Enforcement Association of Lycoming County, will be giving us nine thousand dollars towards the initial purchase of the tasers. And that's a county-wide program they do for all police departments. And I believe they give two hundred dollars per taser.
Per unit.
Yeah, so forty-five is nine thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
That we'll be receiving from them for the initial purchase. So there is a little bit of cost offset at the beginning.
Oh, that's great. Now, by the way, this was a question I asked in my early years on council, and I don't think I really understood the answer. And so let me just ask it again. When we spend, this year, this past year, we spent sixteen thousand five hundred on firearms. What exactly are we purchasing when we do that?
Captain?
The biggest expense there is annual purchase of ammunition.
Okay.
As you know, we have a special response team here in the city of Williamsport. They train every Wednesday throughout the entire calendar year.
Okay.
So that they can stay proficient in the numerous firearms that they use, that they carry, and that they would deploy for a major crisis that we would respond to. So for the annual certification and training for not only the SRT team, but the patrol officers in the department in general, because every officer in the department not only qualifies with their service pistol, but they also qualify with a shotgun and a patrol rifle.
Okay.
So we're buying three different types of ammunition just for those three weapons, plus all the ammunition for the different weapons that the SRT team has. So that purchase on a yearly basis is around twelve, thirteen thousand per year, just to make that annual purchase of ammunition for training.
I mean, I think it's hard to imagine that, but it, once you explain it as weekly training, and then the certification process, times fifty-one officers, you know, then a number like twelve thousand becomes kind of an easier number to understand. And thank you for that explanation. It was much clearer than the way I understood it, you know, almost a decade ago, I think. Mr. Allison.
I have one question. First, though, I'd like to commend the department on the quick work in wrapping up and making arrests over the events that happened.
Thank you. It was a very, very valiant team effort on everyone's part.
And I'm proud of everybody involved for that. The contract services went up ten thousand dollars. Is that, is that the legal?
Contract services is the big, I believe, the biggest expense in the contract services, that would include the Spillman. That's our annual maintenance fee for the Spillman system, and that's the biggest expense there, and that's the very bulk of that line item.
All right. How's that working out with?
Spillman?
Yeah.
I'm very satisfied with the system. We're now year four.
Right.
I think we went online in spring of thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
So overall, the system, I think, has been as advertised.
That's great, yeah.
And I don't believe we have any complaints at this point.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Novio.
I just wanted to add a comment to Captain's comments with respect to the Spillman thing. I know that at our public safety meetings, the chief usually provides us with hard copies of the results for the prior time that they were in service. And the reports are spot-on, very accurate. There's always a pinpoint map, and it always gives us some more clarity with what's taking place within the community. We can see how crime literally can be sort of, you know, found out in advance by seeing where it's taking place more often than other places, which will lend itself to some other issues, I think, coming down the line, particularly, we've already spoken to some extent about camera placement and such. I think those reports will come in very handy if that conversation does come up again and give us some feedback with regard to what we might get out of that. But in my opinion, up to this point in time, the Spillman service has been exemplary. And we should be very glad that we have it. I know a number of other agencies around us are pretty kind of jealous about the fact that we, you know, have this kind of reporting system. So it's been really a good job, and they've done a really good job handling it and reporting to the council.
Great.
Thank you.
And it also sounds like making good use of a system. Sometimes money is spent on systems, and it's not really used to its fullest potential. I think we've seen evidence that Spillman, it really is, it's a good tool that's being well-used, so. The last question that I had really about it, well, actually, here again, start with a comment. I wanted to commend the department for, when I look at personnel services and look at salaries, as I've said before, one of the things I'm looking at is the combination of salaries, overtime, and comp time, because that's costs that are, to some degree, variable. And again, this year, we saw, we saw a full complement of officers, the full year or nearly the full year.
Nearly the full year.
Yeah, I mean, never dipping below fifty, I don't think, that I knew of. And a reduction, actually fifty thousand dollars below budget for overtime and forty thousand dollars below budget for comp time, without, and a full complement, where that more than offset than the actual estimate that we saw for salary. So all of that is to be commended. But as we were talking about the other night, you know, the challenge is personnel is one of our biggest drivers, and there are union-oriented costs, basically contractually increasing. And so, you know, in this budget, we see a three hundred thousand dollar, basically, increase in overall salaries, and most of that is non-discretionary because of the union And so the part that is discretionary to some degree, although I want to, I want to make sure I understand this more, is that salaries connected to leadership of the police department. If, looking in the salary detail, those appear to go up more than would be expected for other non-union members, but I'm told that some of that might be connected to changes in the union contract itself. Can you explain that there's something about a four percent and a six percent?
Yeah, from my understanding, there's always, they're always tried to be a four percent gap between the highest-ranking union member and the administration, thus being the captain.
Okay.
So you try to create that balance because of overtime and other issues that the lieutenants aren't making more than the captains, per se, because the captains are not eligible for the discretionary overtime that the lieutenants and below are able to. In sixteen, I believe, there was not an increase for the captain's salaries. However, in seventeen, they increased it, as you saw in the line item. And to go along with this year, with the three percent raise across the board for the union members, to increase that so the lieutenants and captains aren't making the same amount of money, you would have to increase that by three percent.
So almost, to make the math work, it had to be two increases, basically folded into one budget?
Correct.
Okay.
It was a catch-up from sixteen.
Right.
If we would've had a zero percent raise in seventeen, for example, under the contract.
Right.
You wouldn't be seeing this, of course.
And I can't remember what the raise structure was for the contract.
Three, three for four years.
Three, all four years, okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks for explaining that, I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions on the police budget? There you go, thank you very much. Next, we have the Fire Department budget on pages thirty and thirty-one. And unlike the other night, I'd like to point out, it is seven twenty-one. We're nine minutes ahead of schedule. So we can take plenty of time here. Right, Chief?
I could abbreviate this and get us out of here. You're hired.
Please, no questions. Mr. President, members of council, before you, you have the 2018 Bureau of Fire budget ahead of you. I'll start off with personal services, six million three hundred, three thousand nine hundred and thirty. Dropping down to purchase of services, water and sewer, four thousand dollars. Light and power, thirteen thousand five hundred. Heat, twelve thousand. Fire prevention investigation, three thousand five hundred. Training, twelve thousand. Travel, three thousand five hundred. Telephones, eighteen thousand. Subscription and dues, two thousand.
You can keep going if you'd like.
Supplies and materials, general office supplies, three thousand two hundred. Cleaning supplies, three thousand one hundred. Gas and oil, sixteen thousand. Uniforms, twenty-one thousand. Protective clothing, twenty thousand. Other supplies, four thousand. Fire hydrants and laterals, five thousand dollars. Repairs and maintenance, vehicle repairs, forty thousand. Communications, two thousand five hundred. Miscellaneous repairs, six thousand five hundred. Contract services, eleven thousand. Facility maintenance, ten thousand. Under support equipment, fifty thousand dollars. Full department expense for 2018 will be six million five hundred, five hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Henderson.
Would you just tell me, how many buildings do you maintain with that ten thousand dollars?
We do an incredible job.
Yes.
Of maintaining three city firehouses with ten thousand dollars.
Right, right.
And thankful to the relationship we have with Streets and Parks, it makes that possible.
Good, okay. That's a lot, that's a lot that you do with that little amount, and we appreciate every dollar that you stretch to do that and the relationship with Streets and Parks. The other question I had was, how are our vehicles doing? I know our projected or proposed expenses have not gone up for that, but everything going all right with the fleet and everything else? Vehicles, okay?
Yeah, with frontline apparatus right now, with two engines being within two years old, tower ladder is being, I think, ridden six years, I believe, with that. Reserve apparatus is maintained, and I couldn't be happier with the fleet. We do have, we have some mechanical issues that happen from now on, as any fleet manager would have. Again, we're maintaining with that money, and, you know, we get to the end of the year, and if we're looking in that line item and there's something left, we're surprised.
Do you anticipate us needing to purchase any vehicles in the near future?
I would probably be looking, for 2019, we'd be looking and talking of budgeting for probably at least one or two, we'll call them our daily runners, our command vehicles. Those are getting, some of them are hand-me-downs, we purchase from other departments. They're on the street every day, and they're within the county, within the state, they go. We're going to have to be looking at that line item coming into 2019 and looking for a funding source for that also. And not that I still have, I still have my wand out there with our grants and working with finance in just a wonderful way of trying to make the numbers work. We've done well this year with it, and you'll see it's reflected in this year's budget also for 2018.
How old are those command vehicles?
Excuse me?
How old are those command vehicles?
How old?
Yeah.
Oh-nine is one of them. I believe the other one is an oh-six. And it's oh-five, I do believe, those are the year. They all kind of grouped together right there.
All right. Thank you, just wondering.
Mr. Cott.
Your training has gone up considerably. What are you going to be doing differently?
Well, with the possibility, or with retirees coming next year, we need to build that budget up for sending guys to the academy. We also have continuing education that has to go on for men to keep their emergency medical training. And then just with the way the world is coming at us lately, we have just been venturing out in the different ways with, you know, civil unrest, emergency management is another one, getting guys up to the New York State Fire Academy for fire inspections, building inspections, working hand-in-hand with codes. We're seeing that every day. Mr. Allison knows that firsthand, seeing us in the street all the time. It's a payoff right there. The return is just what we say. We go out nights, weekends, when there isn't always someone from codes available. I can pick the phone up and call Mr. Girardi and say, listen, here's a word of property of such and such, we've eyed this up. Do you want us to condemn it, or do you think you should have eyes out here? That happened with us on Friday, and he made it happen. So we spied it, didn't know how to handle it, raised his hands, he sent someone out, and code showed up, and we took care of it. So there's the payoff.
Thank you for that. The other question I have for you is, are the telephone, is the telephone system working? Or is it still, okay, I guess it isn't.
Boy, I'd love to refer that one to Chris back there. It is when Verizon's playing well, I guess. All of our issues haven't been beyond our, beyond our control. You know, earlier in this year, we were down quite a bit with our hard lines, and we were just relying on cell, and we can't operate that way. As of lately, of course, I think we've been, been pretty good, so there's a glitch somewhere. They don't know where it's at.
This is, you cannot operate like this, and it's been going on for, what, a year now?
Dixie cups and strings.
Well, hopefully, Chris can work it out. Okay, that was, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Novio.
I just think it's kind of important to repeat just something we mentioned rather quickly there. The chief mentioned that Streets and Parks helped out with some repairs on one of our facilities. I'm assuming you're referring to Riker Avenue and some of the repairs that took place up there. We had the cameras on, I think it's always important to let the taxpayers know that we do as often as we can, as much in-house work and repair as we possibly can. And that, over the last several years that I've known us, has required a lot more interaction between departments. And I don't know what the dollar amount we may have saved on Riker, but I'm sure it's relatively substantial. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that we are doing these things, that these efforts are being made, that our managers and department heads are connecting with each other, and doing so in a cost-saving manner. And I think that's something that we want to make sure the public understands more of. Thank you.
A couple questions about all of that. The facility upgrades, or the maintenance that we do, the work that we do, all of that's great, but I know there's some kind of fundamental systematic things. And I know the administration is working on a plan that will start the process of the work that council did to identify, you know, the needs in this building and in the fire building, Fire Department, and other buildings across the city. I assume you're participating in that process.
Yes.
And will take, if I remember correctly, the number of need seemed to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so to start with. And so hopefully, what we can do is prioritize, you know, what's the most important things to do in City Hall? What's the most important things to do in Riker? What's the most important things? We've been chipping away at those, but I think 2018 will be a really big year to take care of four hundred and fifty divided by seven hundred, sixty percent of those issues. And then maybe we can spread out the lower priority ones over the next two or three years and kind of operating funds. So I'm assuming you're participating in those processes, and council, of course, looks forward to helping think through, you know, the list, the checklist that we got sort of from Mr. Visco, and figuring out what the most pressing needs are and really make good progress in the coming year. Small follow-up on the training question.
Yes.
Is the increase in the travel budget connected, same thing?
Yes, it is.
And you said something about retirees. I assume that's the driver for severance pay.
Mm-hmm.
Being in the increase. And then support equipment, we budgeted forty thousand, spent sixty-five.
Right.
I assume that's going to be, we'll see that reflected in a transfer. I remember us doing something, I don't remember what it was.
For the AFG grant award for the radios, I do believe.
Oh, okay. And so then fifty, what are the support equipment plans for the coming year?
Our support equipment stayed at forty with our grants that we are, that I've been aggressively applying for and we've been getting. Didn't sit well with finance at first, and Joe has helped us out, and we put a, we'll put an extra ten thousand in there this year to cover if we have one hanging yet, and we have another one out there potentially. And one of those, if we get the grants and that money is to be utilized, fine, if not, we won't touch it.
What are the equipment plans if you do have all fifty thousand dollars?
Right now, with the washer and dryers for the personal protective equipment, we received that grant this year, rewarded that. I believe the resolution always came up here. That was a twenty, up to a twenty thousand dollar grant. We'll have ten percent of that to match. We're waiting for 2018 to make that purchase, as we make work and room at headquarters to accompany that, all within that little shell. And then coming into 2018, we've applied for the AFG grant along with some several surrounding volunteer fire departments to replace all of our turnout gear. The stuff we're wearing every day in the street, we can't keep up with it in repairs with the amount of workload that we're getting lately. The guys, it's really starting to become an eyesore, and we're seeing problems with it. So hopefully, we get that grant out there, that'll probably swallow up the rest of that chunk, so.
Thank you for that explanation. On, to follow up on what Mr. Henderson asked about, the command vehicles, if we are purchasing those new, we're looking in the ballpark of fifty, sixty thousand each?
The numbers that we've been, the numbers that we've been working with, to put it in the street, lit up, decal, ready to rock and roll is around forty-eight to fifty-two thousand. And that's like an all-wheel-drive, smaller SUV.
Yep.
So.
And then the fleet of, you know, pumpers and all of that kind of stuff is in good shape, but you probably have a guesstimate of when we'll need to buy the next one of those?
Correct. We'll probably start seeing that money pop back up in either the CBDG line items.
Yep.
Probably next year. I think we're carrying the pumper in there now. We're keeping eyes on the aerial.
Yep.
We're starting to get longevity out of it by doing the maintenance that we're doing every year, preventive maintenance, and bringing in the manufacturers or the reps that do that. Those guys have the eyes on that equipment better than we do. We're starting to see that payoff, and I can't explain that for the radiator this year that we hit. But other than that, it just seems to be, if we can get more longevity out of the trucks, it's a win-win for the city and the taxpayers.
So in three or four years, what we would expect to see is, I think, ninety-eight is the oldest one, or maybe the two thousand, whichever wears off first.
We'll probably, we'll have to be looking at another engine here, within, at least signing a contract within, I would say, two to three years.
And it takes a year to get it once you sign the contract.
Take a year to build, yeah.
One of the things, and we were talking about this the other night when we were talking about the pool maintenance fund, this is another area where I think we would really benefit on an annual basis of setting up a fund and funding it at the same amount every year. Now, some of that CDBG, and we can't do that, and it's nice when we can use those funds Now, some of that CDBG and we can't do that and it's nice when we can use those funds and build up over time. But if we could set aside, I don't know, even a fifty thousand dollars a year, then every seven to ten years, we can use it for one of those command vehicles. Or in between, we've added up, you know, maybe two of the three payments that we would need for a pumper. And so that on an ongoing basis, we have consistent budgeting. But then when we need either a small piece of equipment like a command vehicle or we need a pumper, I don't even know what an aerial costs. I think those are more, much more than the five.
Million-two.
Yeah. But we can, we can at least have a year's head start or two years head start on the financing of it by just getting in the habit, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, setting aside so that there's a, a growing fund because it's predictable.
Sure.
And so it's not here, but I'd encourage you to try to work with the administration for next year's budget to see if we couldn't just get that habit started. It's not a surprise when we need to replace vehicles and you've got a number of expensive vehicles. And, and by the way, I mean, it's essentially the parallel of what we already do in the police department. In the police department, we plan, except with a few exceptions, for three vehicles a year. It's a steady number that sometimes we can borrow from for, as we just heard about from the tasers. But those are smaller chunks to buy at a time. It's a whole lot to save up for a half million dollar or one point two million dollar vehicle. And not always will we have, yeah. Not always will we have that extra Act thirteen that allowed us to get the one a couple of years ago here early, so. I would encourage it and support it if, if you can make it happen. That's all I have. Ms. Allison.
I just have one question, but as far as the command vehicles, I know that state and federal regulation in the state with the PUC and also the feds, especially in private industry, but everywhere are, there's a the command center on any kind of emergency is becoming more and more a place where they want to know that somebody is in charge, a lot of things have to be documented. And it's, it's not just a place for people to hang out and a lot goes on there, but it's going to become more important as time goes on and especially when there are big incidents. It's very important. As far as the, the new, how, how many officers do you think we're gonna?
Excuse me?
How many retirements and then new officers do you think we might?
We have two coming in June of 2018 and then one, I believe, December thirty-first.
Okay.
So, we look at, perhaps we'll be hiring two next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the Bureau of Fire? Here you go, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we go to Environmental Control and Codes, page thirty-two and thirty-three. Mr. Girardi, how are you this evening?
Good. Dr. Williams, and yourself, sir?
Good, very good.
The Department of Environmental Control and Code Enforcement. For Personnel Services, grand total of eight hundred and forty-six thousand and fifty-one dollars. For purchases of services, we have office rental, forty-one thousand. Contract services, four thousand. Health officer, three thousand. Subscriptions and dues, a thousand one hundred dollars. Training, four thousand five hundred. And clean and seal, thirty thousand. Under Supplies and Materials, you have general office supplies, seven thousand five hundred. Uniform allowance, twenty-seven hundred. Gas and oil, three thousand five hundred. Other supplies, a thousand. And support equipment, twenty thousand. On the next page, you have equipment repairs, which would be vehicle repairs, four thousand. Grants and gifts, you have the zoning hearing board of eight thousand five hundred. Housing Board of Appeals, zero. Board of Health, one thousand. Plumbing exam, examiner's board, four hundred dollars. Total department expenses, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Here you go, I guess you got off easy.
Can I ask for a little more money then if I'm? Thank you very much.
I don't know about that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. We tried to stretch out the fire department, I thought that got us back on time. So, next is Department of Recreation, page nineteen to twenty-one.
For the Department of Recreation.
How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Recreation Administration, total personnel services, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Under Supplies and Material, general office supplies, two thousand five hundred. Equipment slash software, six thousand. Under Purchase of Service, advertising, five thousand. Subscription and dues, two hundred and fifty dollars. Office rentals, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. Training, one thousand, seven hundred. And communications, seven hundred, for the total department expense of one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Comments or questions? Ms. Novia.
Back on equipment and software, we went pretty substantial jump from a thousand to six thousand. Any thoughts on why that?
Yeah, what the Recreation Director is intending to do this year is to incorporate recreation software where she can manage the scheduling of facilities, for example, the parks, pavilions, ballfields. Also allowing registration for pool passes and accepting credit card payments.
We have no this in hand now?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
Since our Rec Director uses her vehicle to go to the pools and the parks and everything, there's no allowance here at all for gas and oil or vehicle repairs or anything like that. Is there a reason for that?
She's not requested mileage. Other department heads use their vehicles, personal vehicles at times. There was a city vehicle provided to her, she's opted out of that option, so therefore her responsibility for that.
Because I know in the past, you know, it's been, you know, there's been quite a bit of traveling back and forth and isn't this kind of unusual that she's not requesting this? I, I, I find it unusual that she's not.
Not, she's, she's not accepting the city-provided vehicles that was, was allotted for her, so not having that city vehicle, the maintenance of that vehicle and the like are not included in the budget.
I guess what I'm going to ask you though, since she's doing and, and traveling through the city on city time in her own vehicle, how is that with insurance and, and things like that? I mean, to me, that could be a problem?
My understanding is, is she, her personal insurance would be responsible.
But if she's on city time and doing city business?
It's probably the city, which is probably in excess of whatever her own individual auto insurance coverage is. So we should be adequately protected, although it's probably a good thing to verify that.
I'm questioning only because if she's using her own vehicle on city time and city business. It doesn't?
No, it just means that her coverage is probably primary, the coverage she has on her own vehicle. And then the city has fleet coverage on top of that.
Question on that specific issue. Any problem that could emerge is likely a result of the relationship between her insurance and her, not a problem for the city. Right, the, her, her insurance might not like it, but that's for her to deal with. Okay. Other comments or questions, I saw it. Mr. Slaughter.
Training, I saw we didn't spend any this year, now they're requesting seven, to, for it to go up to seventeen hundred?
Yes, in 2018, the Recreation Director is proposing to complete the necessary qualifications to obtain the certified pool operator certificate. So she's estimated the cost for that and a grant workshop, workshop that she typically attends at the time of year, or at this time of year in 2018.
And my second one was the advertising. I saw we had seventy-five hundred, we only used two thousand and then we jumped to.
I am not exactly positive on what happened with the Recreation Guide this year, but my understanding is, is the Recreation Guide is intending to be brought back, brought back in some form in 2018 along with the coverage for the poster cards for various events that are held throughout the season.
So there was no rec guide this year then?
I don't believe that there was, I'd have to, to verify that for sure. Online, but no printing cost, okay. Typically that would have covered the printing cost and the mailing of the, the reader.
Say everything, Mr. Slaughter.
Just one, final one, so then bringing that back will be less than the seventy-five hundred that we anticipated for this year?
As I, my understanding is she's looking at some form of, so possibly not mailing, but maybe joining in with a newspaper. I, I don't know the exact details, but some form of the recreation reader again.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson.
I just wanted to, to say, I think Jessica's been doing a great job in this first year, you know, getting everything together and she's done a lot to, to save as we will see, you know, on the next page here, but but just to mention that recreational software that we were talking about under equipment and software, that's six thousand dollars, I think will be well worth our investment in that really because she does so much in that office trying to answer the phones and, and jot things down and take payments and it will really increase the efficiency, I think, of that office and so I'm glad to see she's asking for it and I think it is, it is well worth our investment in that way, so. It's too bad that she couldn't be here tonight to explain it, but we would congratulate her. But looking forward to seeing how this will help her in this next coming year. Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Allison.
Yeah, on page twenty-one, the, the seasonal salaries.
We're not there yet?
Oh.
I'm sorry. I think we are only on page nineteen.
Oh, we stopped on nineteen, I thought we went through to twenty.
We just did the one page, right?
We're on nineteen, yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I can be first though.
Yes, absolutely. You held your place in line. The one question I had then was, I noticed that Recreation Administration Secretary, that there was a boost. I'm assuming that boost is for more hours, not for a higher pay rate?
It is not. As you may recall in, I believe, August, when we renewed our agreement with the Step AmeriCorps program, we had been paying that, or deferring the payment until the following year. I think that council had asked that we get that caught up, so we'll be making our first half's payment in August in 2018 when we renew our agreement and then making the subsequent payment, the, the final payment in 2019.
Okay, so.
So it's a one-year increase.
Okay, so it's a temporary increase, but in the end, we're getting a lot more hours than we did when we were paying an hourly rate.
That is correct.
For two, for a one-year increase of about two thousand dollars. Thank you for that explanation. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to page twenty. Oh wait, I'm sorry, Mrs. Katz, I didn't see you.
I think with AmeriCorps, we're catching, their schedule is different than our schedule.
Their fiscal year runs through August, I believe, right? Yeah, so that's.
Because of our seasonal salaries, this is where, and seasonal.
They split, they split their annual program cost into two payments, so therefore you'd make one payment at the beginning in August and then, you know, mid-year you'd make your second. What we had asked them to do, because we hadn't had the funds budgeted in the prior year, we asked them to defer our total cost into the next calendar year so it fit within our budget. But I think Ms. Mealy was the one who recommended this year that we try to catch ourselves up to fit within their billing cycle.
Thank you. So now we'll go on to page twenty.
On page twenty, the Recreation Program, total personnel services, thirty-seven thousand. Under Purchase of Service, Electric, four thousand, two hundred. Bowman Field Supplies, four thousand. The James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program, three thousand. Program Supplies, one thousand. Transportation, three thousand. Supplies and Maintenance, five thousand. Concerts in the Park, three thousand, five hundred. Special Events, twenty thousand, for a total department expense of eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
Is that for going from Brandon Park to the, the pool?
That is, that is correct.
And that's for the whole summer, that starts at Memorial Day to?
That's for the entire park program.
Mr. Henderson.
For the Bowman Field Supplies, we've, we spent nothing last year and now we're up to four thousand.
When working with Jesse, that's where we threw some dollars in for field preparation for the, the high school games in the spring or Penn College in the fall. So that'll work in conjunction with the money that was in the Streets and Parks budget discussed on Monday night. The reason that there was no cost in 2017 is because, again, the field wasn't under construction, therefore not able to be utilized.
Mrs. Katz.
For, I have a question that because the field is done, so what supplies?
The infield mix, line paint, things of that nature.
For this coming year, that's already being taken care of by MLB, isn't it?
That hasn't been determined at this point, so we want to make sure we cover ourselves if it is not.
Well, with the agreement with MLB, they have to look at the list of requests, approve it, but we're responsible for any costs associated with field prep. So they won't, they won't cover that. They'll only cover the ongoing maintenance of the field during the season, but if there's special maintenance needs for preseason, then that'll be our responsibility. So we're sort of guesstimating, you know, what that will be.
But it really shouldn't be that much at this point.
What's that?
It really shouldn't be that much at this point.
No, I, I don't think so, but like I said, Joe said, we're, we're sort of feeling our way through this. Because, you know, this'll be, we didn't have any of this in 2017, it'll be all new in 2018, so we gotta sort of meet halfway with MLB on, you know, who does what during that timeframe, timeframe.
The time of the, you know, the permission itself is, they're trying to hear how many people want to use that because as you know, we need to have the permission.
Right, they were going to give me a list, a complete list so we can go to MLB with one list and, and get their approval. We have to go back and forth, so I think we're pretty close to getting that list, file list.
Is, is, is that working out with Jess not being here?
Is that working out that you're getting informa, I'm sorry, that you're getting information? Because I know they would like to know how many people are going to be using the field in conjunction with what you have to get permission for.
My understanding of that was that Adam Winder was going to be working on getting all those requests together. I do have some of the initial requests from when Jesse was still here, but we want to make sure that we're not missing anything. So I think that there was a redirect or a re, a request to resubmit the information so that we made sure we had a complete group.
I'm just hoping that it doesn't get lost because of the part-timers in, in the rec department. That's the only thing, because they, she wouldn't be that familiar.
Get me that list, so, you know, they're going to compile the list and forward it to me, so there, there won't be any.
And this way then, with that, you'll be able to determine how much work, work is going to be needed on the field then?
I mean, they have an onsite person.
Right.
But he may have to work extra hours or whatever for these particular games, so, especially on weekends and things like that. So there will be some additional costs for field prep.
Okay.
So, again, we're just sort of guesstimating the number at this point.
That I understood at some of the meetings, but I just wanted, I wanted to clarify. Okay, I thought four thousand maybe was a little high, but we don't know how many people are using the field extra.
Well, I'm going to help break and I, I'm.
With your back?
Yeah. That's why it's going to take a long time.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Slaughter.
The difference between program supplies and supplies and maintenance?
The. The program supplies are programs for the camp program itself, um for instance, um activity materials. The supplies and maintenance are for items such as um netting for the, the tennis courts, basketball nets, um mulch, uh replacement swings, things of that nature.
Other comments or questions? Um, the, uh, the, under seasonal salaries, um, we had two parks programs last year. We budgeted thirty thousand five hundred. We spent twenty-eight thousand five hundred, now budgeting thirty-three thousand. Can you?
I believe what the intent is this year, um, there were, we'll say, on the park side, camp managers, um in the pool side, a pool manager or head guards. I think Jesse's intent this coming year is to get one person to oversee both, one person in each function. So you have, for the parks program, you have one person to over, oversee program, um the summer schedules for the Memorial Park Program and the Brandon Park Program, and then again, someone at the pool to manage the overall operations day-to-day um for that facility.
Okay.
So you'll see on both of them that it's not like a three percent increase or whatever from our actual estimate this year, but that's to fund an additional position in each group.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Katz?
Speaking of that, we talked about this uh last year and also the previous year, where we wanted to eventually open up the programs to other parks, and with things that are going on in Newberry Park, it would be really nice if, if there could be a program set up in Newberry Park, and obviously, we're not putting that in the budget. We're still going to stick with just Memorial and Brandon, and I, I, I think it would be very beneficial that something in the Newberry area, even though Memorial is so close, to have something there. Um, so the funding isn't available for that, I guess, Mayor, right?
Actually, several years ago, we did have a parks program in Newberry, I would say, five?
Four or five.
Oh, four or five years ago, and it was not attended. It was not very well attended, so that's why uh we decided to stick with the two parks, but we're always open to suggestions.
Yeah, I, I think everybody is looking for more activities for our kids to keep them more occupied, and um with the problems that we've heard that have been going on in Newberry, maybe, you know, it wouldn't hurt to maybe come up with something, you know, to, to uh maybe not a full app program, maybe something that can be done for that area. Uh, I, you know, again, I'll reiterate that I know Memorial is close, but Newberry, I'd really embrace their, their area.
Yes, and I agree with you, especially with the improvements that we've made in Newberry Park over the years, and we've renamed it after Mayor Preziosi, and he has some additional ideas. I know he has spoken uh to city council about maybe creating like a small stage there, so they can have little performances there as well, but uh we are always willing to listen to those types of things. I would like to actually sit down and have a meeting with Mayor Preziosi and council to, to speak about his vision of that park as well, and maybe some other ideas that we can come up with um in a smaller fashion, in other words, that won't impact the budget.
Exactly, exactly.
Especially when, if you're talking about special events, and that's something that I know that um we had discussions the other night about that, about what events are, have been beneficial to the city overall, and then you look at the cost-to-benefit ratio, and like, for instance, this Halloween event that we had was not well-attended. Uh, so maybe we can incorporate a special events in that park to start with.
Well, you have to keep the kids active.
I agree.
Keep them active and keep them, you know, occupied, and therefore less problems.
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Ralas?
Um, along those lines, um, it might be beneficial for us to um talk to some of the people up in Newberry. Um, I've had some conversations, and um they, I, I think they'd like to be included in the discussion about the park, um since it's in that neighborhood and in the surrounding areas. Um, you know, what would they like to see up there, and how could we best meet that need? And um, so we might want to do that going forward, maybe at the West End Community Center or something.
Sure. I think that would be a gr- um, actually, I think that would be a good idea in the beginning of the year, so we can prepare for the spring, summer, two thousand eighteen, and basically have a town meeting there-
Mm-hmm.
-with council and the administration working together.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, other comments or questions? Now, page twenty-one.
Um-
I've, I've written it down.
He'll probably answer it before I get to it.
The swimming pool program, total personnel services, fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Under purchase of services, electric, five thousand. Pool supplies, two thousand. Bathhouse supplies, one thousand five hundred. Pool preparation, six thousand. Pool equipment repairs, five thousand five hundred. Bathhouse equipment repairs, one thousand. Water, two thousand six hundred. Chemicals, ten thousand, for a total department expense of eighty-eight thousand five hundred.
Uh, comments or questions? Um, Mr. Allison?
The, uh, the personnel services uh have fluctuated a lot from, and perhaps, if you don't know, maybe somebody on the Recreation Commission might, but why, um, because uh the twenty-sixteen budget, we were budgeting sixty-eight thousand, and then twenty-seventeen, we budgeted, budgeted fifty-eight thousand, but only spent forty-two.
Um, my belief is it's management style. Um, I think that the current recreation director was able to staff the pool at an adequate level, um but not with an overabundance-
Mm-hmm.
...of, of guards um present at the pool.
Well, that's great. Great news, and kudos to her. I wish she was here to, we could compliment her on that, but we'll make sure to do that later.
Uh, Ms. Gobio?
Yeah, uh, Joe, I'm not sure you can even answer this from your position, but uh I'm getting, I would call on confirmed reports, or at least continuous reports, about a, a long-term leakage problem. Uh, do you have any thoughts on, or any ideas about whether any of that's been addressed, and how far we are away from curing that problem?
Um, I can't speak to the specifics of that. Um, I believe we should be about to the point where we've received our final water bill, and I can try to compare that to give you an idea of water usage um over the past two to three years, um so we can see if there still appears to be, um, if the water use is going up or down. So I'll-
I know that our crews have been diligent in trying to keep their hands on this issue, but uh water's expensive.
Right.
And we want to be mindful about where, where we are with that issue, particularly before the season opens again.
I'll try to have something for, um, first reading.
Again, I know it's not your, it's not your seat, so I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson?
Um, you know, at the end of the last meeting, the mayor talked about the uh, the MOU with the Waves organization. I'm assuming that's um coming from the seasonal salaries there. Um, do you have numbers at all that, that reflect for us how much of that would be going to coaches, how much of that would be going to uh just the uh lifeguards, that type of thing?
Yeah, that number's not broken out in the salary detail. Um, if I can take a stab at it, I would say it is probably sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars.
For the coaches?
For the two coaches, a head coach and an assistant coach. Um-
It seems to me the number's right around there. I've, I've heard the, I've heard it as well.
Megan, do you know that with the um, what the uh agreement has in it?
It's eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Um, we don't have that MOU yet, and, you know, I'm very interested to see that, obviously, and we will, uh, from what I understand, and I'm looking forward to that. Um, but it's, I'm, I'm wondering, um, should we, as a, as a city, be subsidizing a private swim team? And it would seem that's what's going on here. Perhaps it's not, um, but I'm, I'm wondering what that relationship will be. So I'm very interested, you know, we're, we're talking money right now, um, and, and what would be the provision for that type of agreement, but we don't have that agreement in front of us right now, so it's, I'm wondering-
Can you put it to that next week?
Next week.
Next week.
Next week. Uh, at the, at the, uh, next week's meeting, the seventh?
It will be delivered in your eyes, as we go out.
Okay.
Friday.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because that will be a great help to me uh in, in looking at these numbers here. Uh, we want to make sure that we're doing what we, what we should do, what we ought to do, what's appropriate, and uh it's not necessarily a, a financial uh issue, I think, uh but we want to make sure that we're doing things professionally above board, uh and, and for all of our citizens. So, I just wanted to point that out. I'll be looking forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Um, do you happen to know the, the pool preparation change?
Yes. Um, numbers included in there, have typically been uh pool paint. Uh, there's areas that need to be painted every year, along with the tile repair. I'm not sure if you're familiar with attire, the tile band um underneath the stainless steel gutters. Uh, what the proposal is for twenty eighteen is to remove that tile band, since we're continuously replacing and, and re, um, putting the tiles back up, but just leaving that a darker paint strip.
Okay.
Um, so that would include the cost to remove the tile and replace any plaster necessary um with that replacement, um paint, and then trying to get some filter inventory um in case the filters go out throughout the season.
So at least-
Excuse me.
So at least some of that increase will be at one time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there are no other questions on page twenty-one, uh, we can move on then to general government, um, starting with city council. Thank you, Joe. Um, uh, so for a city council, we have personnel services, two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred. Office rental, twenty-six thousand. General office supplies, six hundred. Other expenditures, fifteen hundred. Contract services, five thousand, uh, and legislative contingency, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, for a total of three hundred and seventy thousand. Comments or questions? Um, the only thing I would add is, um, we've got a couple issues coming up where we don't have costs uh associated with, in clear terms of negotiation, and also the commissions that were established. Um, and so we see a, a bit higher number than normal, not than last year, but than, than a normal number for legislative contingency. Um, but those, those costs are unknown, um, and so it's good, good to set aside some, uh, in addition to what our normal kind of standard reserve is there. Um, if there are no questions, we'll move on to uh page ten, city clerk, uh, where personnel services total sixty-one thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars. Other services and document imaging, uh, twenty-seven hundred. Advertising, seven thousand. Codification of ordinances, nine thousand. Office rental, nineteen fifty. Training, five hundred. General office supplies, twelve hundred, for a total of eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Questions? Hearing none. Uh, that brings us to the Bureau of Law, page eleven. Mr. Smith, how are you this evening?
I'm doing very well.
Great. I like the tone.
Good evening, members of council. The Bureau of Law, legal services, seventy-one thousand five hundred. Subscriptions and dues, twelve hundred. Lean filing, one thousand one hundred. General office supplies, two thousand. Total department expense, seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Uh, comments or questions?
And I think for the benefit of Councilman-elect Slaughter, he ought to know that a portion of the community development, uh, the legal services portion goes into the solicitor, specifically to Norm. I don't get any cut of that action.
And he's not bitter about that at all?
[laughing]
Um, but, so, in other words, the, the expenses for legal counsel come out of two separate budgets?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Uh, I should press the easy button for you. Uh, next uh is uh Controller's Office, page thirty-six. Ms. Wundering, how are you this evening?
Good.
Good.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor Campana, and fellow taxpayers. The office, uh, the Controller's Office budget is as follows. Uh, total personnel services, ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Purchase of services, auditing service, forty-five thousand. Office rental, forty, four thousand two hundred. Training, three fifty. Supplies and materials, general office supplies, six hundred. General office equipment, six hundred, for a total department expense of one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, thank you very much. That was also easy.
Thank you.
Uh, next uh is, on page thirty-seven, uh, tax collection and treasures office. Mr. Grimes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Page thirty-seven, Office of the Treasurer and Tax Collector. Personnel services, um salary, seventy-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. Part-time, fifteen thousand dollars. Other related benefits come to a total personnel services of one hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars. Under purchase of services, automation services, twenty thousand dollars. Bonding premium, seven thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. Subscription and dues, two hundred dollars. Travel and training, two thousand one hundred dollars. Office rentals, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Legal and contract services, seven thousand dollars. Supplies and materials, general office supplies, three thousand. Equipment, thirty-five thousand, for a total department expense of two hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Um, before I open up for questions, could you just comment uh for a second on the discussions we've had over the course of this year of a transition that we'll be doing for, especially for the benefit of Mr. Slaughter? Um, obviously, a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred and sixty-four thousand uh is a, a significant jump, but much of that is one-time expenses for a transition in your office, right?
Correct. We have um a few taxes that are outsourced currently. We have a business privilege tax, a mercantile tax, and a local service tax. They're all collected through Burckheimer, um, anywhere from forty to fifty thousand dollars a year. They, they charge a commission for collection of those taxes. Um, in order to work better within our, our other departments that can help us with those collections, more efficient collections, and hopefully, over the next few years, cost savings total, um, we're proposing that we bring that tax collection in-house, and certainly, there is extra time associated with that. Um, we would look to twenty nineteen for that collection to be in-house. We were hoping for twenty eighteen, but there was some uh legislation out there that looked like that might not allow us to bring it in-house. That census has gone away. Um, but a lot of these costs in twenty eighteen, those taxes would still be with Burckheimer, but it would allow us to um get all the mailings ready, allow us to get the software ready, and everything else that we would need in our office to begin those collections in twenty nineteen.
Thank you. So with that explanation, um, comments or questions, please? Uh, the equipment itself, um, that's thirty-five thousand, is that a one-time kind of expense, and what, what will that go towards?
That's mainly for the software, for collection of all three taxes. There's still a few different softwares that we're looking at. Um, one that's, that's more expensive, but a much nicer system, and allows us to communicate with the Earned Income Tax Office, with the Williamsport School District, which could create more efficiency and, and more businesses found. Um, but we don't know if we can justify that, that change in cost, so we sort of padded that number a little bit. Um, and the, the difference between that software and the other software we're looking at is, one's a one-time fee with a yearly maintenance. The other, the nicer software, is a, uh, they're a consulting company, really, so the, the software itself doesn't cost much, but um any changes that you want to it, any training, um installation and stuff, has, has cost, hourly cost associated with it, and that could be anywhere from thirty thousand dollars in the first year to- And that could be anywhere from thirty thousand dollars in the first year to five thousand dollars, depending on how much we need, how long it takes to convert the data. That sort of, uh, those sort of things. But, but either way, the software costs dramatically go down after the first year or first two years.
One of the things I'd encourage, by the way, um, because I think it was really informative, um, and ask you to do is pass on to Mr. Slaughter, the analysis that you did, um, in particular on basically the time for payoff by bringing things in-house. And you had very conservative assumptions in that analysis. But basically, you know, by year, I think it was three, um, we're yielding, uh, additional net revenue, given these upfront expenses. And so it just made sense when you explained it to the council that, that we start making this transition. Take some time, cost some money upfront, but it'll pay off in, in the long run.
Sure. It's, it's a very quick return on investment. And like you said, that's, that's without considering any money for increased collections. We've had a lot of discovery, as you've seen, in the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, over the last couple of years with the resources and information we have, we assume, but we don't want to count on that number growing, um, as we get all of the information and documents in our office.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, page, um, twenty-seven, uh, planning. A new page, I believe. Ms. Myers, how are you this evening?
I'm good. How about yourself?
Good.
To begin, the twenty-eighteen proposed budget for our planning department, uh, the total personnel services is seventy-one, fifty-five. Our purchase of services is office supplies, six hundred. Advertising is one thousand, five hundred. Contracted services is twenty-five thousand. Subscriptions and dues are one thousand. Training is two thousand, five hundred. Surveys and public meetings is two thousand, five hundred. And office rental is three thousand, two hundred with a total department expense of one hundred, seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
The contracted services, what, what will that be?
That will actually be the Park Avenue Revitalization Plan. Uh, that was budgeted for twenty-seventeen. And since none of the funds were used and we are beginning the project, as you know, um, that is planned to be used in twenty-eighteen.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and I'll note for the overall budget, once you subtract those funds out, um, it is pretty close to the estimate that we made last year when council, in last year's budget, I believe, set aside a half-year, uh, budget and, and more or less hired you mid-year. And so we anticipated the budget, uh, of about eighty thousand dollars, uh, going forward. And so, um, it was, I think, uh, a, a good strategy for, uh, that, that council, uh, came up with last year, um, to be able to phase in those expenses, take on half of the cost and then build up our ability to do that. So, um, I think we're very, uh, I think I can speak for everybody, glad to have you here and, and have enjoyed, each of us that have had the opportunity to get started thinking about how to work together on, on moving projects forward. Having the capacity that you bring to the, uh, city is, is valuable, definitely.
Thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Uh, I'm just excited about the, um, to see that there's a training budget in there. Uh, what training did, did you do this year and what, uh, training are you anticipating for next year?
So the training this year actually included the American Planning Association Pennsylvania chapter. I was there for three days, really learning, um, about revitalization, um, in the communities and the different creative ways that communities are revitalizing their depressed areas. It was a real key focus and a real good, a really good learning experience. I also plan to do that next year. What I'm also planning to do as well is to apply for, uh, leadership like coming, to actually really experience like coming county, since I'm originally not from the county and I am still slowly learning about the county. And it's, it's a really interesting county. There's a lot of interesting people. And there's a lot of different components to the county in, in the whole, when you look at the community as a whole.
And it's certainly a good way to make the acquaintance of, uh, of people in Williamsport who are, who moving forward may be, um, able to be partners with you in, in revitalization. So it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
One more comment on, on the whole addition of this position. In the past, we were able to rely on, um, a lot on John Greto and, and the county as well. But the county, uh, planning department, um, is, they're busier than ever and they have a lot on their plate. And they advised us that they could not help as much, um, as, as they did in the past. And, um, and that we should really, for, uh, I mean, municipality our size and with the issues we have and the plans for the future, that, that we should have our own planner. So, um, we thought that was a great idea and it turns out it was a wonderful idea. So, uh, glad to have you on board.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you. Next on the agenda here, uh, is Economic Development Marketing, page twenty-eight. Mr. Mayor?
Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of city council. As discussed at budget session number one, my two thousand and eighteen budget incorporates job consolidation or multitasking such as the Assistant General Manager Engineer positions. After further consideration, I'm recommending that the marketing economic development position be removed from the proposed budget as I feel that the responsibilities can be accomplished by our city planner. As a result of this change, the new fund balance for two thousand and eighteen will be one hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-one. In addition, I believe that moving the marketing expense into the planning budget will give our new planner, which I believe everyone's very happy with, especially me. The funds needed to develop materials that highlight the city's key features to attract businesses to invest in the East Third Street Gateway, Park Avenue area, and other underdeveloped areas so we can grow our tax base. If approved, I would welcome the ERC to work with us to choose appropriate materials so we can market this city ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and so, uh, what, uh, I, if I understand all of that correctly, um, then rather than discuss the proposed amount, what you're, um, asking for is a motion to reduce personnel services and, and the associated items to zero. Move, reduce the marketing expense on this page to zero, but add a new line on page twenty-seven in the same amount of fifteen thousand. And then, um, because, uh, pensions are really total divided by how many people in a department. Now that that department will be zero, that pension will still need to be paid because it's part of the MMO. And we would need to, uh, move that pension from this page to some other page.
Yes.
And I think that page is the Director of Finance, for simplicity's sake. Is that how I, okay.
Yes.
I read ahead, um, on head and tried to make sure I understood all of this. Okay, um, uh, we can either discuss the original proposal or streamline that by entertaining a motion. Mr. Smith, can we take all of those actions in one or could we at least break it into three parts? Which would be, uh, make all the reductions under one motion and make the two increases under then, motion number two and number three?
Could do it that way, or if you anticipate that it's not going to be contested, you could do it all in one.
All at one. If we did it all in one, it, we'd need five votes. Okay. Ms. Slaughter, just for your information, reductions are four votes and, uh, increases are five votes. So, uh, I'll entertain any combination of those motions if you'd like, if you'd like to make them all at, at once, just say so.
I'll make a motion. We do them all at once.
I'll second that.
So, uh, to clarify for Mrs. Frank and the record, uh, the motion is to reduce, uh, on page twenty-eight salaries, FICA, life insurance, workers' comp, pension, and healthcare to zero, um, to reduce marketing expense to zero. And at the same time, create a marketing expense and fund it with fifteen thousand dollars on page twenty-seven and increase the pension line item on page twenty-two to twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three, which is an increase of thirteen thousand, five hundred. That's correct for the motion and the second. All right. Um, discussion?
I'm pleased.
Yes.
Mr. Allison, please. Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, just to say, I, I think this is a wise move and, uh, uh, it, it certainly helps our bottom line, which I'm very concerned about. So thank you for that and I, and I appreciate, uh, I, I think we can, uh, see how this goes this year. I think it'll go great. And, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it all comes together. Uh, so I'm totally on board.
Other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. Uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, uh, and the motion to do the various reductions and a couple of increases carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that brings us to Information Technology, uh, page twenty-six. Mr. Pavlock. Welcome back. Just, you gotta be like a, uh, next year is gonna be a selfie kind of-
I was gonna say it's selfie time, Chris.
Filming time. Uh, so you don't have to be up there again.
An iPhone on a selfie stick.
Oh yeah, selfie stick up here. That'd be great. How are you this evening? Again?
Yes, great. Thanks. I think we're still ahead of schedule, so let's, let's not slow this down.
That's because I was late, Joe. Geez.
We'll make up for Monday night. We'll swap out the time.
Well, we could take some time here if you'd like. Um, it, uh, it is only eight-twenty-six and we're, it's supposed to be nine-ten.
Under the Department of Information Technology, total personnel services, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Supplies and materials, supplies, two thousand. Communications, eight hundred. For equipment, we're programming thirty thousand dollars. And under purchase of services for office rental, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a total department expense of one hundred, twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Just to discuss a little bit with this budget before everyone, um, comes back with their comments. As everyone's aware, we're in a transition in the IT department. Building this budget, we weren't sure, um, what direction the new position would like to go versus where the previous position was going. Therefore, you see a lot of blank lines in two thousand and eighteen. What we did was discuss with RVT's IT department, um, what they felt a comfortable number would be. And thirty thousand seemed to be an okay number for all those empty line items, for our web IT host, or for our internet, I'm sorry, for our web hosting and website development, um, and just normal equipment repairs throughout the year. So that's why you're seeing the budget different, um, this year than it has been in the past.
Thank you. Um, one question, just to be clear. Uh, we didn't see it the other night, but I remember last year there was a bit of controversy because not only was the department's proposed budget larger than council was comfortable with on this page, but there were also budget line items essentially for the ID, IT department and the city hall, uh, budget. Is, are all of the expenses more or less, uh, in this budget for the IT department this year?
No, I think Bonnie, uh, Mrs. Katz had identified that on Monday night. There is the machinery and equipment line item. While that's not equipment per se, it's more of the bones behind it, the wiring and things of that nature. So there is IT-related cost, um, in the city hall budget also.
Okay. But I, I, I seem to remember there were specific technology upgrades that we had-
There's been, there's been nothing identified at this time. That's something that the new IT position will need to determine and we've given a source of funds to, to go forward with in two thousand and eighteen.
And I, and I'm comfortable with that, uh, overall number. The, one of my discomforts, uh, under the, with the previous occupant was that number seemed to be, um, growing larger than we could afford, given, uh, you know, the constraints. And so we had to rein in those budgets each year. This seems to be a more reasonable and sustainable number?
It, it's a number that we can maintain, um, what was previously put in place, um, until we can, uh, change if necessary.
Obviously, special projects may come up, uh, in future budget.
Correct.
But, uh, from a sustainable number, this looks reasonable. Uh, Ms. Mealy?
The one thing I would say is I think, I know that I, probably all of council would appreciate a conversation with the new, um, with our new I, IT employee, um, as soon as, you know, he has time to get sort of his feet under him and we, you know, I-
What the plan is.
Exactly. It would be nice to know what the plan is and it might be nice to know that in a relatively public fashion so that, so that everyone's aware. Since we're, since we're moving on a budget that is relatively skeletal in terms of IT, it might be nice to understand at some point, um, where that money is being spent, you know, in a, um, presumably perhaps when we begin to look at making some of those expenditures moving forward into next year.
So maybe we could encourage the incumbent when you see him, um, to, to be able to present maybe in, you know, month two or three, you know, kind of what he envisions in terms of the, the projects.
Sure. I think he's watching tonight.
Okay. Uh, other questions for the IT budget? We want to grill him since he's, you know, wired in to the meeting.
Can you make us look better on TV?
Yes, for thirty thousand dollars of lighting, a thousand chambers, he sure can. I've seen what he can do with lighting. Mr. Henderson?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, mention, I came across my mind here. Uh, the, the, uh, the new website is, is still going. We're, we're progressing with that. Obviously with the new, um, IT director and the transition, things have slowed down, but there's gonna be a refocusing, I think. And, um, I, it's, it's still in the process. So hang in there and, uh, we'll get it going. I think it'll be a benefit to the city as a whole. And it'll, I believe, increase the efficiency of, of our own city hall. So I'm looking forward to seeing that, uh, come together. There's money for it here in the budget. We're gonna keep going. So just to let you know.
That's good. And I, in addition, the, uh, efficiency for city hall, I think I'd also add transparency.
Yes. Thank you.
For governments. If we can communicate more effectively with the public and be more transparent in, in what their government is doing for them or how their dollars are spent, I think. I'd, uh, agree with you and then add that word. Any other comments on the IT budget? Thank you very much. Um, next, uh, we'll have you trade spots and Mr. Cooley can present the, uh, finance and personnel budgets on page twenty-two.
On page twenty-two, you have Budget and Fiscal Officer. Total personnel services, uh, with the amendment just made, should bring that total to a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Under purchase of services, contracted services, ten thousand. Subscription and dues, one hundred and fifty. Training, one thousand, five hundred. Planning expense, one hundred and fifty thousand. Office rental, twenty-four thousand for a total department expense of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, three, two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Can you talk a little bit, Mr. Pavlock, about the administration's plans for the additional, uh, planning services that we're taking on this year?
Currently, the, uh, planning firm that we have, uh, which, whose contract ends in January. We're evaluating that contract along with another and we intend to bring something to council in January. This is giving us the, the resources necessary, um, to work with that plan.
Okay. Um, so the actual, the, the total amount is not necessarily set in stone. But it's what we're intending to, to spend. I guess what I'm asking is, um, I know we'll have the conversation in January, but are we looking for, uh, expanded services in terms of both state and federal planning?
That's my understanding. I'll defer to Mr. Nichols for-
Yeah, the, um, services, uh, again, we currently use Penn Strategies. Their contract is up and that is under evaluation. We also have a relationship with Delta Development to RVT. They've been instrumental in, in administration of the RACB grants and other, um, government affairs needs for RVT. needs for RVT. But rolling into the next year, the primary area that we possibly need their services is on East Third Street and they're working with, they have a contract with the college right now. And it would be very appropriate to utilize them going forward for the East Third Street project. If you recall, they presented a financing strategy, DRC and council and RVT's been picking up all the expenses, but like I said, going forward, the East Third Street project is primarily a city project, so we wanted to evaluate just how they wanted to proceed and bring that to council in January.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? And just to clarify, in both of those cases, whether the renewal or a new contract, those require council action, so we can have that discussion then. Okay? Yeah, sure. Any other questions on page 22? If not, 23. Go ahead and do 23 and 24.
Finance and Purchasing, total Personnel Services, 146,106. Purchase of Services, Insurance Fleet, 81,000. Insurance Commercial Policies, 331,000. Subscription and dues, 14,000. Municipal Tax Office Expense, 137,000. Supplies and Materials, General Office Supplies, 7,000. Printing Supplies, 3,000. Equipment Repairs, Office Equipment, 15,000. Service Contracts and Rentals, 6,000. Under Debt Service, Interest Short Term, 15,000. For a total department expense of 755,106.
Comments or questions? The, can you, I know there was effort this year to go up to bid for the insurance, but things seemed to fall through the cracks? Or did we have that RFP go out?
There was discussion with the Finance Committee and I can't recall where that left off.
There was a time in which, you know, I wasn't engaged. I was just trying to get an update on where that was.
Again, it was under consideration this year, just for timing purposes. It just, we weren't ready to do that and so we want to really look at that after the new year. So I, we really need to, if we're going to do this, really do it early on because the timing is needed if we do switch carriers or brokers.
I knew that once it got past maybe September, it, there wasn't enough time to really go through the full effort, but it has now been three, four, five years or more since we've done a full RFP and bidding process. From what I understand, the, the best practices are every two to three years that you do that.
That's correct.
And so we're well past due and I think it's, I believe that our insurance consultant has advised us that we should do it as well. And even, I think Finance told me, indicated that she had put together a draft RFP suggesting to us that it was past time, that it's a process that we undergo.
That's absolutely correct.
So I would hope.
One idea that we want to pursue is have sort of an open house where, like a pre-bid situation where we open it up and we invite people to come and just discuss, you know, how they'd like to approach this, what their interests are. So there's a lot of upfront notice about the process. So that's why we really want to deal with this the first half of next year.
Well, I asked that Finance, again, take the lead on ensuring that that happens and of course council will cooperate in whatever way we can to facilitate that process. There's only good that can result by having, opening that up to competitive process and see if we can't save a few dollars because when you're spending, you know, $400,000 on insurance and I think with a fairly good track record on, on liability issues, there's probably savings to be had. The other question I had, and I think I know the answer to this, but if you can help us explain the increase on salaries and the personnel in the office.
That's the addition of the procurement position.
And so talk, talk to us about what that, the capacity that adds to City Hall and the benefits of developing a more systematic procurement process might have to the bottom line.
We believe that that position can pay for itself. If you have someone out there researching pricing, buying in bigger quantities, we feel that those opportunities present savings. So what we're looking to do is not just citywide, city and RVT utilizing this position to incorporate those major purchases, to get the best bang for the buck and hopefully pay for the cost of the position over, over the years.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, the, the kind of Wild West procurement policies that we've had over my time on council have very likely cost us considerable funds. And so just understand this, make sure I understand it, the procurement responsibilities will cover all departments of the city, including RVT and public safety?
Yes, will centralize the function.
And that will also make your life easier, allowing you to be more efficient in your responsibilities as well?
That'll take a few things off my plate.
We'll find more to add, I'm sure. But I, I think that is good. I mean, there is, for somebody whose job on a day-to-day basis is not finding the best price, finding the best price, as we all know, is time-consuming and difficult. And so if we can have somebody in that job that shaves pennies off of every purchase, pennies add up to quite a few dollars and, and I think very likely will more than pay for itself. So I'm, I'm glad to see that in place. That hire has occurred or will occur early in the year?
Has occurred. It has not made their way down to City Hall at this time. They're getting familiar with RVT's operations, but we expect here at the end of the year or before the new year to transition them down here and getting on a cycle for time.
That's great. Thank you very much.
In fact, she's attending training for procurement. More related federal programs, but are very applicable to the city way of doing things in terms of bidding and, you know, a kind of procurement manual needs to be updated drastically. We went from centralized to decentralized, but decentralized is woefully too decentralized and now we've got to, you know, sort of have a combination of both and alleviate some of the, you know, duties of departments having to deal with this situation, but save, I think we save a tremendous amount of money.
The money savings, and I guess I should, you know, reiterate what you just said because I left it out the first time. It will allow the departments themselves to then focus on their core missions and not on these kinds of issues, which itself will then make those departments more efficient and spread the taxpayer dollars out more effectively as well. Ms. Mealy.
It might also be a wise time, perhaps in the Finance Committee, to have a discussion about exactly what the city's purchasing ideals are. That is to say that we all know that sometimes the cheapest option might not be the best option in the long run, both for, in terms of the quality of the product, but also in terms of other sort of nebulous concepts like buying American versus, you know what I mean, all of that stuff. And I do think that if we're hiring somebody specifically for the job of, of making purchases and making wise purchases for the city, we need to be giving her, I guess, good guidance on exactly what that means to us. And, and it's a little more complicated than just, you know, saving, saving dollars every time you can. But, so I'd be happy to participate in that discussion if, not, not that I'm necessarily an expert by any means, but it's a discussion I think we need to have somewhere in the city. Okay?
I think we'd like to go through the Finance Committee and then bodies as a whole, is the procurement manual, have City Council.
I think that'd be excellent.
Look and approve it because I think it's an important document and that's, it's something
you haven't seen for years and it's become very loose. And I think when you have a formalized process that, you know, is very transparent and it's on record.
And that will also, I think, streamline the flow of information and payments through the city from the procurement side to the payment of invoice side to the, the controller's process for reviewing payments, I think.
Right. And, you know, how do we bid for, you know, professional services and how do we, you know, RFPs, IFBs, you know, all kinds of practices that need to be followed, I think, or updated from what we do now.
And by the way, I think City Council is happy to participate in that procurement process and I'm imagining the city clerk as well. Haven't talked to her about that ahead of time, but clearly our budgets can benefit from, from those efficiencies as well. So thank you. Other comments? Hearing none, then we'll move on to page 25, Human Resources.
Human Resources, total Personnel Services, 88,664. Under Purchase of Services, Office Supplies, 250. Advertising, 4,000. Medical Exams, 900. Training, 1,000. And other professional services, 750 for a total department expense of 95,564.
Thank you. And before I ask for questions, the, on the salary line that jumps up, is that a similar situation where two years get folded into one or is there some other explanation for that change?
Due to the lapse in time, there was an amount budgeted at the beginning of the year for the year. Based upon the time of hiring, we were able to start that position a little bit higher.
Okay.
And then after a probationary period, proving their worth, we gave them, or it was agreed upon for a, what is the word I'm looking for?
Merit?
Merit increase or a, a, increase for the end of the probationary period.
A, a, a step that was determined at the point of hire?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then as a non-union position, I understand the two and a half percent was kind of across the board.
Correct.
After that. Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Comments or questions for the Human Resources budget? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Money well spent.
Absolutely. Creating policies and procedures and standard operating procedures, I think, serves the taxpayers well. That brings us to the end of the 2018 budget review. We'll have our first reading on December 7th of the ordinances involved with this and the second reading on December 14th. For our agenda tonight, that brings us to the announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting is that meeting on December 7th at 7:30 here in Council Chambers. And that's the only announcement. Are there any comments, questions from members of council this evening? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, your administration, and the general public. And to, since the general public is outnumbered by the media, I'll convey my inner Marlene Wayley and say any comments from the media. Hearing none, I'll entertain your motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
In a second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody.